I mean, should be June tenth.
June tenth, yeah.
June tenth.
The agenda says, uh...
Twenty.
Are we gonna pick up?
Have you met? Okay.
Good, how are you?
This is ninety minutes of the front row, huh? Welcome to the war.
Yeah, Mark, how are you Charlie?
And they want a subdivided this way.
Was it the, was just the, the most important thing, was it?
Well, they have, but I don't think, no, it could be. They had a, they had a, um, a shed over there.
Did you hear anything about two houses going on?
No, just, no, I didn't either.
Okay, so they want to extend this one up here.
I think it's only one.
And, and, and they build on here.
That's what I think they want to do, so this is the existing house down here, and they want to build here.
Yeah.
I see. This is interesting, uh...
Is this the forty, this is the forty?
Yeah.
What's this? This is forty feet wide, that looks like it's a forty foot, it's not forty feet wide, right?
Uh, that's the way I understood it, but I'm not sure.
Well, this is right on.
Right.
Do you want to get a picture of that? All the cameras in the car. Had the cameras in the car.
That's why you have those.
Intertina motion to accept the minutes for our June tenth?
Second.
Uh, just one correction on preliminary business, it said, um... Motion and vote for retail, Wayham Retail Management is missing, I think it was just the motion and vote to close the public hearing was missing. So with that, I'd look for a motion to prove as amended?
Motion to prove as amended with, um...
Unless I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, tell me. Uh...
I thought we approved it. This is the...
If there's no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So there was what, just the three of us here for that one, right? Is that your new car out there Charlie?
I wish.
Who's this?
I don't know. Was strategically parked, I know that.
Oh, yeah. Um, you have the factory five decision and the... It's in your folders.
Is that the, oh, okay. See the sign here tag?
Yeah, have you guys reviewed the, uh... Conditions on that, now who, um...
You already approved the, uh, motion. The, to approve the proposed plans.
You just looking for a signature on that Ken?
Yeah, just a signature.
Do we have the, um... We have the public hearing notice for this? So we still have to open it?
Correct.
And then continue? Um... I don't know if anything, Mark can't sign that, can he?
Mark wasn't there at the time of the decision.
Very well, next up is the public hearing for David and Lisa Mather. Planning Board will hold a public hearing June twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, at seven PM, room three twenty, the Wayham Multicivic Center. Forty-eight Marion Road, Wayham, to consider petition eighteen dash nineteen for preliminary subdivision. With requirements of Mass General Law Forty-One, Section eighty-one O, and from Section Three of the Wayham Subdivision Rules and Regulations. To David and Lisa Mather, Carja F Engineering, two sixty-six Main Street. Wayham, seeking to obtain preliminary approval of a property located at twenty-four Oak Street. Assesses map thirty-nine, lot M twenty, in the R thirty zoning district. If you, uh, notice you had an email... Or a notice that the, uh... Applicant has requested a continuance to our next regular meeting. We do have some abudders here that... Were not out of their way to get here tonight, and at the last minute request, I'll give them an opportunity to speak for the record and then look to continue. If you just identify yourself and...
Thank you. Edward Barrett. And Louise Barrett. Owners of the property at twenty-eight Oak Street.
Mm-hmm.
And, looking over this map... On map thirty-nine... We can see where there's a private way, which has been requested. That would be forty feet wide. I have been, I have understood... That a driveway would have to be a number of feet away from the property line. Can you put, can you put a forty-foot driveway directly abutting my driveway? Or is there supposed to be a buffer zone between the two?
Well, the driveway is, I haven't seen the engineered plans, but the driveway itself is not going to be forty feet wide. What they are proposing is the layout for a subdivision roadway, which would require forty feet.
This private way, yes.
Yeah, the pavement width won't be forty feet.
All right.
I assume that they would then ask for a waiver of road construction and build basically a driveway.
All right.
Which would more than likely be located in the center of the forty-foot layout, but that's... That's to be...
But this isn't in the center of anything, you know, this is over on the edge.
In the middle of that forty-foot layout.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just, Bob Kenner, sixty-five Oak Street. This private way, can it go right along its property line? Or is it a setback from it?
No, it can go right along though.
Right along the property line?
But the pavement itself would not be, I hope, along on that same property line.
We would probably ask for some sort of buffer, yes.
Is there anything in the, uh... In the zoning specs that, that address that? That, that, that there would be a certain amount of buffer between the property line and his pavement?
Is that in the rules and regs, or nothing? There's no...
Not in the rules and regulations.
That would, that would be negotiable, I guess is the best way to put it. Uh, you know, the board, I think they're looking at it now, but we haven't, uh... We haven't seen what was intended, other than what you see in front of you.
I mean, obviously it would be nice if there was some type of shrubbery or trees left there, so that, uh...
Mm-hmm.
It wouldn't be looking over at the other property.
How close is your driveway to the property line, now?
It, it, it virtually runs right along. At, at, at a certain point, the drive, the driveway down at the street is probably about four to six feet away. But as it gets toward the top of the hill, it, it, it actually comes right to, to the property line, yeah. And this, you have to recall that this driveway was put in sometime in the, uh, mid nineteen sixties. So I don't think at that time there was any restrictions on where the driveway could be constructed.
Maybe we should explain that this is a preliminary subdivision proposal. And it's not a definitive, it's not the final plan. What it is, is a suggestion by the landowner of what they want to do to subdivide their land.
Okay.
So the planning board will take comments, uh, consider the application and the conditions that, that are suggested by the plan. And then make some recommendations for them to go back and redo a definitive subdivision plan.
All right. I, I understand that, okay.
One other problem is the fact that we have plans to go on vacation that week. What does one do on that case?
Written testimony, written, uh, we'll accept anything in writing, either by email or by letter.
To whom, I, I, could you explain that please?
I'm sorry, to the planning office.
To the planning office?
Yes.
Is that what you call it?
Okay, all right.
And what usually happens in that case?
That information gets included on the public hearing record. Uh, each of the board members gets a chance to read through it. And they get to consider all comments.
All right.
In other words, can they still hold the meeting then, even though we're unavailable?
That's correct.
We were here for the originally scheduled one.
That's correct.
Is there a big elevation change there?
Yes, yes, you mean from the street level?
No, from your property down to their property, you're...
No, not really.
No.
No, no, they're both on the same, same level.
Just one quick question, in two weeks when they submit the plans and stuff, how long is it before you review the plans and, and decide on a recommendation that the planning board has?
They've asked that, uh, we reschedule to the next regular meeting, which is...
July eighth.
July eighth?
Yes.
That's...
That's the second Monday in July.
Yeah, but it's not a holiday here.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
And, you know, which time if there were, uh... Engineering issues or...
Mm-hmm.
We'll see what their waivers are, I don't think the waivers requested it.
They haven't requested waivers.
They haven't requested them yet, so that'll give us a better idea of what their plans are.
Okay, and you won't decide on July eighth, oh, this is a good plan, let's go forward? Maybe?
There has to be, it has to be a sign off at some time.
Well, even if we were to approve this, they'd still have to come back with a definitive plan.
Okay.
But, I mean, the reason for filing preliminary is to know what you got ahead of you and what problems you have to solve to do what you want to do.
Well, this is one thing to be addressed, yeah. Okay, so I guess we can put it in writing?
And I'll be here for the meeting too, so, I'll be here for the meeting.
Oh, good thing.
Close enough, I can see from my house.
You might make a change.
Yeah, I'm sure, yes.
Yeah, okay, in the meantime, I'll prepare some...
Not so clear, did it show where that proposed driveway was going to be?
Yes.
And it's close to S property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because, all right, I talked, David was at my house, David Mather was at my house yesterday, and said the driveway was going to be in front of his garage and part of my parking spot. Going up through the property where the house is, that's where, he told me the driveway was going to be. I say that, that's not what, but I'm just telling you what he told me yesterday. Because I'm concerned because of the elevation, how high is that hill? Like, across the street is all woods, but it's elevated maybe ten feet high, I don't know.
Could you, could you just, could you just identify yourself for the...
Yeah, all, all that mud and everything is going to come washing right down through my yard.
Yeah, you know, actually, it's too bad they couldn't put the driveway on the other side of the house, because that is, that is level, level property all the way from the street, right street.
You're gonna make your other neighbors mad at you.
He told me, this is Mike's house.
You have to explore everything.
It's going up this side, that's what he told me, so...
Yeah. Well, anyway, I will prepare a letter...
That, that may be, why they asked for a continuance, they may be redesigning, so...
Yeah, I see, all right. But I'm, I'm going to develop a letter and I'll send it to the, to the office.
Yeah.
Uh, the planning office or whatever.
Planning and Community Development.
The planning and what?
The Office of Planning and Community Development.
Planning and Community Development, we not have to develop the community, is right. Planning and...
Do you want an email for...
Yes, please.
In fact, it's, it's, it's not on the letterhead.
Is it, yeah, the phone?
Yeah, I, I get it, thank, thank you, yeah, mm-hmm.
The letterhead shows another email address.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you.
So with that, I would look for a motion to continue to July eighth?
Intertina motion to continue the public hearing for David and Lisa Mathers till September eighth?
July.
July eighth.
July, that's close.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, did this officially open up the hearing, or is this was just a conversation?
No, I had opened the hearing.
Okay.
So, anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ed, you can keep that. I think you can keep that.
Oh, no continued? The next item of business is a covenant release. For Bill Beishan, I assume for... What's the name of that street?
Deepwater South.
Deepwater South.
As you may recall from the last meeting, the, uh... Board, uh... Approved the release of the covenant with the, uh... Homestead Association being in place to maintain and manage the, uh, the drainage system on the property. So, following that release, you have to take a vote on the release of the accounts, the performance bond. And the, uh, and we're suggesting the fifty-three G accounts. So there are four accounts.
Have you received a receipt in the registry of deed that that document was filed? Well, something was filed, anyway. Six thirteen, two thousand nineteen.
What did he file?
Um, the document that we had last meeting, did you?
That, that, yeah, I've seen that, that's what they gave him for a receipt?
Yeah. Oh, here's a copy of it, oh, this is... That, that's just a copy.
Okay.
Oh, the receipt that he gave you goes with that? Or it identifies it?
It doesn't identify it, it just shows that he filed something on the sixteenth.
Jesus.
You mean, do we accept that, if we don't know for sure that's what he filed?
I, uh...
I don't know, I don't know if that's a good idea.
I, I, you know, I can give you a receipt stamped on a napkin, what does it, what does it cover, we don't know. Uh, you know, we've been playing games with this project for a couple of years, and, uh... Till we get proper identification of what is, what he registered.
It was, um... It says, issued to Pocaro Realty LLC, or Beaver Path, or Pocaro Realty Trust, or Wayham Town Planning. Much pleasure.
I don't, I don't, personally, I don't like the documentation.
I, I'd much rather see a stamped copy of what it was he actually filed.
A, a, the file should be stamped, that they gave him, he can get a copy of that, even if it's just a cover letter, am I correct?
Should have a book and page right on the cover sheet, every page should have a book and page reference.
Yeah, can you, can you, uh, tran, uh, transfer that information to Mr. Beishan, Ken? Please?
I think he has to transfer information to us.
Well, tell him what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Because otherwise he'll be back here haunting us.
Do you want to allow the release pending his... Submission of a stamped, uh, copy?
That, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it would be these amounts plus interest accrued?
Oh, we don't care about that, that's, you know, that's minor, we just want the right documentation, there's, there's too many things been happening lately.
So...
This hearsay.
We got twenty-seven, four ninety-four, which I believe is the charity.
Yeah.
The seven nineteen is... Fifty-three G?
Fifty-three G account.
What are the others?
Those are separate fifty-three G accounts.
Who do you return the Homestead Association to?
Homestead Association. Which is him.
He would receive it himself, yeah. There's a W nine form filed with who the money goes back to for each of these accounts.
So just approve the, approve the release of funds pending receipt of the stamped document filed?
Book and page.
Document with the book and page number stamped on it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Not handwritten either.
Was that a motion?
Yes, it was.
That was a motion.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This says four fifty-three G accounts, but they're not...
No, they're not four, they're three fifty-three G accounts.
What did you fill out in documents? Drainage.
The, um... Just got a operation and maintenance plan and covenant with the town of...
Next we have... Is this, um... Is this pretty much lined up with the information you gave them, Charlie? You haven't seen it?
I don't know what you have.
Although, the reason I ask is I see Master Mill work there, and I, they just don't have a sign off, right?
Oh, the next one on the agenda is Jordan Road, John Pine Grove Estates.
Oh, I thought those were what we were looking at here. You have any... Sign off paperwork on these? Are those all the roads to do with Pine Grove Estates, or is this a different...
It's only a portion of the... Includes Jordan Road, Jonathan Lane, and Skipper's Way.
Okay.
That's the old Jonathan Estates?
No, this is the one, this is up at Seawood Springs.
These are the plans.
Remember, they were going to cross the culvert?
Oh, yes, yep, High Dam Road.
And they pulled everything off, well, no, across the street. High Dam Road goes to the right, this is off to the left. To the Marotta property. Has this been signed off, anybody looked at it, I don't think those roads, are they complete?
I don't have anything in this file, it says they were reviewed.
Is anything being constructed up there? Or that's built out?
I think it's more or less built out, but, um... I'm not sure the roads are finished.
Yeah, I've, I've been doing inspections up there, not since last...
Yeah, I've been doing inspections up there, not since last fall, but... I've been doing regular inspections for those three streets.
Have you done a final?
Excuse me?
Have you done a final?
No. No, I, I saw everything from the, uh, the drainage installation to the base material, to the binder, to the sidewalks, to the curbing. Uh, bounds, I think, are in, but I haven't done a final.
When was the last time you were there?
Last fall. Late last fall.
I was told that the dam, the culvert, has failed.
This, this had nothing to do with any culvert. They stopped short of that, all three of them.
Yeah, but the original subdivision was gonna cross the culvert and be in on the left?
Yeah, well, that's where these three are, but they stopped short of that. That was, uh...
They pulled it all back onto the side of the culvert, is what they did.
Yeah, yeah.
But they, uh, I think their open space is on the other side.
I don't recall.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. It's, I'm sure my plan is probably the same as what you have. You know, I have mine in, in my inspection folder, and when Nazee has called me for inspection, I've gone up there to see what's going on. But I haven't been there since last fall.
Why don't we hold that money, Ken? And, uh, get a final inspection now?
I'll make a final report and give you, uh, give you a letter on what I see.
Yeah.
So I can refer to when I did the inspections.
Take the Asbeld plan and some of the Nazi projects.
I've got a full set, I think.
Do you have an Asbeld plan?
An Asbeld? No, I don't have an Asbeld.
I have two copies. You can have one.
Need a motion to move on that, George?
Uh... Well, the vote would have been to release the covenant, so...
Well, we have a motion to deny it, releasing the covenant till we get a final inspection.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is a discussion regarding fifty-three G accounts. You'll see that on the separate, separate page.
Yeah, that's a whole list of them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, now...
That's not all of them. Those are the ones that...
Ones that we...
These are the ones we discussed last meeting?
No, I don't think they have.
Not completely.
Now, this money here is only, only, only for inspection only, right? Fifty G account?
It's pre-page engineering, yes.
Okay. Now, Canning Realty, there's never a final inspection on that because that project was never done, right?
Which one?
Canning Realty.
I assume this is the first one.
That's, um, Carlton Place was number one. That's, that was a forty B. I have no idea what the status is of that.
I had, I had nothing to do with that one. I don't know. I don't know about standard repair either. Don't know what that is.
Standard repair came in front of this board. Um, I don't know if it's ever been signed off.
What is the criteria for releasing this money? Is it final inspection? No, there's no other need for the, uh, the money.
Well, that would, wouldn't that be a final inspection? Or the project was never built to begin with?
Correct. As, as we go down here, Ken, right off the bat, Best Friends Preschool, that project was never completed.
Let's...
You know, we gave them a temporary OP out of, out of the mercy of our heart. They don't even have a sign up yet. Love my shrubbery.
Um, let's, let's go through the list and see what we can...
What criteria did you all use when you came up with this? The ones that you thought were done or never started or never done?
The ones that we had no activity on, um, for years.
Have you got files on Carlton Place and standard repair, Ken?
Carlton Place, yeah. Standard repair, I don't know.
Okay. If you wanna pull the file, I could take a look at it. If there's anything I can do to, you know, get it inspectioned, to see what the conditions are, I'd be happy to do it, but I'm just not familiar with the project at all.
Before we let the money go, why don't, why don't we do that, to find out where we're standing at, Charlie?
Yeah, just pull the file. I'll, I'll drop into Ken's office and see what it says. If there's anything that, on my end, I can do, um, if the board wants to authorize me to do it, I'll be happy to do it, but I just don't have a report because they don't know anything about the project.
Um, Smithers Vicent?
That don't even sound...
Believe it or not, that constru- that got constructed without any inspections whatsoever. They never called for any inspections at all.
Where was that, Charlie?
That's the old...
Springborn.
Springborn, okay.
Springborn Horseshoe, not the old Horseshoe Mill Road.
Yeah.
That's not the name of it.
I'm gonna make the executive decision and say, "Give AT&T their three dollars back."
They need it.
Best Friends, that needs some...
Yeah.
There might have been some, um, pavement striping necessary there and a little bit of landscaping. I'll go back and, and I can go back in my record to see when the last inspection was I made, but it was at least two years ago, might have been three.
Because...
Say we're gonna adjust some parking lot lighting so it's not shining in the neighbor's house also.
Uh, could have been. I don't recall. I'd have to see what the file says.
Uh, Canning Realty.
I think that's the first, that's the first project that they did. They never finished it. They never put in the landscaping in the front, never called for a final inspection, so I would say that that's outstanding.
I was gonna say, I don't know if this is the first or the second.
Uh, just remember that these are not performance bonds. These are...
Right, but if, but if he's, if Charlie goes in and does an inspection and gives us a report, said it's not completed, then, then we can send a registered letter out to him and tell him, hey, uh, something should be done or whatever, or we remember when you come back next time.
If it's not complete, it's an outstanding special permit that you still have control over as a board.
Mm-hmm. Isn't that the whole idea behind the final inspection, is to make sure they...
Yeah, it is, and, and it's, um, it's one of those things that comes up from time to time where temporary, uh, building permits are given before everything is really done. And then, once in a while, people just forget about doing the rest because they got what they needed.
Yeah.
And, but I know that one for a fact that we never did.
If you went through this list...
Yeah.
Could you knock off a third of them and say, "Yeah, they're done giving them money"?
Well, I, I can do that if, as we go through it, as George goes through it, I can tell you.
Dollar General, that appears complete.
Dollar General's complete, so whatever is there can be released.
The final inspection was done on that, Charlie?
Yes.
The landscape, uh, plan was up to par.
They were landscape...
They haven't cut the grass since they've been there.
Well, we can't have any control over that. I mean, once, once the project is in, the grass is up, and I realize that even that drainage area looks pretty cruddy.
Yeah.
But, um... The only thing you could do would be to, again, send a letter. If there's anything that's in conflict with the terms of the special permit, you could go after them that way and ask the building inspector to enforce the special permit. That's the way it's normally done.
What got me was they were told about the two-foot berm required along the road. And they objected to it, and then I think they put a three-foot berm up.
You know, they did put the berm up.
But it's higher than it needed to be, and it's steeper, and...
Yeah. So that one, you know, my last inspection was the work that was, that was there was done. Is it in good shape? Could be a lot better, but, you know...
Thirty-one sixty-six Kernebury Highway, I'm not...
Did we decide that?
Um, Charlie said it's done, so... Um...
Do you recall what that is?
Yeah, there was, there was somebody that was gonna, um... He was gonna put up a building. It's down almost to the entrance into Indian Heights and, and that area.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
He wanted to sell, uh, or repair, uh, water ski, uh...
Snowmobiles?
Jet skis and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay, it's now, it's now gateway pool.
That was the cat place.
Yeah, that never came to fruition, so you could probably release that.
So, that could be released. Next, Sun.
Smokehouse.
Must be a Sun.
I don't know what the status with that is. Every time I go down there and they ask me for, to come in and make a final inspection, there's a ton of work to be done.
So, that's still active?
Yeah.
Master Mill workers...
That's the same thing as Canning. Uh, they never asked for a final inspection either.
Apparently, they may be coming in for another, uh...
Modification?
Modification.
So, not a lot of cars there for, uh, what they stated originally they were gonna have there.
Well, I pointed out that there was, the lighting was a little over the top, but...
Uh, same thing with Bayside Agricultural. I mean, they got their building permit and go ahead, and, um, I know they're in the process of finishing up things, but again, a no final inspection was never called for.
Because they never put their final quote or ask file down either. That's still in binder.
Uh, Zach Noun, that's outstanding because, um, they really haven't done any outside work yet. They got their permits, but they haven't done any work on the outside.
Was that Kernebury Highway, that one?
No, that's Sandwich Road. That was Wayham Dental, I believe. Hilltop.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the next one, um, El Baba, that was a Board of Appeals project, I recall. But that's gone. That's, you can release that. J A S Realty, I don't know what that is.
It doesn't ring a bell.
Uh, C T G Properties Sonic, that was down at the corner of, um, Six and Twenty-eight and Main Avenue?
Wasn't built.
And that was done.
That's a car lot now, right?
Yeah, that could be released.
Fort Fairfield is still in the works?
That's outstanding. I had a call from, uh, Pastory Construction, and they asked me for a copy of the letter, which I sent to you, uh, Ken, on the outstanding items. It had to be finished, and they were gonna go in there and do it, but the guy that's gonna purchase the property wanted to know what had to be done, so I sent Pastory the list. I haven't heard from him since he got the list. So...
I haven't heard from him either.
Yeah, so that's, that's outstanding. Uh, Patterson Brook, I assume that is, um, um, what was going to be the subdivision? In there at the end of it.
That's the only thing I can think of. Do you...
This, this was the McCarthys, yeah. That's since passed. They withdrew.
And that, that could be returned to them. There's nothing left for me to do there.
No.
There's nothing ever built. Liquors?
It wasn't a completed subdivision. That, that's why they weren't here last...
It was a site plan.
They modified the subdivision.
Yeah, there was two things. There was a site plan as well as a modification.
But they do have... An approved roadway that was never built, right?
Right.
Under the old Tremont Enterprises, yes.
And it's probably over two years old, anyway.
Oh, that's...
Expiate.
At least fifteen years old.
Liquors and Moore.
That can be released. That's done.
You did a final over there, Charlie?
Excuse me?
You did a final inspection on that?
I did, yeah.
They got a lot of dead trees in the front.
Uh, I went, I went by there, what was it, today? Um, I didn't notice a lot of dead ones.
Yeah, a couple of them.
I didn't either.
Might be a couple.
No?
I drive past that thing all the time. I really didn't pick up on it.
I, I didn't pay too much attention. I know I, I went by there one day, I see.
The, the grass could use a little water, but it is coming up, anyway.
That is Toby Road, right?
Yes.
Toby Road.
Might take, you know, just take note of the sign. I, I don't think it's a terribly attractive sign. It probably meets the requirements, but I think they could have done a lot better, personally.
And...
Water Whiz, I don't have anything to, to report on that. That was a Z B A issue again.
Today, claim a constructive approval? Water Whiz parking?
They attempted to, but they didn't meet the requirements for the, uh, for constructive approval. What you did was, uh, or was it you or the Board of Appeals? It was...
I think it was Board of Appeals. We, we made recommendations. And it went to the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, that's, that was the Board of Appeals, so, uh...
Now, they're putting a duplex on it.
Can I, can I ask something about Water Whiz? Um, A, I don't think the entire area is, is paved. There's still some stone area of that part.
They allowed them to get away with that.
Yeah, they, they did not, uh, other than some gravel, they didn't do much to the...
They probably still got oil coming out from Home Horn Mall.
But we didn't require that of them.
Bad chicken wings.
Say, "We made recommendations to Z B A," and if Z B A, did they ever approve anything, or did they...
No, they didn't. They kicked it down the road.
And my other question with Water Whiz is, they, I have a... My other question with Water Whiz is, um, seems to be overflow parking in the, uh, tractor area, the tractor supply?
Tractor supply.
No, it's actually the, the old wall, man, parking lot.
That's caddy, caddy furniture.
They walk through tractor supplies a lot.
Yeah, that, that dead space in the middle, and now, those, those people are, are walking behind tractor supply down a pathway to get into a secondary gate?
That's the people that live down there.
No, no, there's, there's a ton of traffic coming from that.
There's a ton of, you, you'll, you'll see a hundred people walking down to a trail that will lead behind tractor supply into that property.
Mm-hmm.
So, my question is, A, is it permitted? B, is there any liability? Because I, I don't know what happens with those property lines back there.
Prior to that, there were people walking down with kids and strollers and wagons, walking down Kernebury Highway from another lease site down the road. It was...
You'd rather have them wa- I'd rather see them walking it back than through the highway.
I, I'm not disagreeing with that. I think it's a, it's a good solution, but i- is it a proper walkway and is it an acceptable walkway? Are, are we having them walk over tree routes and through potholes of dirt and everything else?
No, it's a paved driveway.
That walkway behind tractor supplies is a paved pathway into Water Whiz?
Yeah, there's a back gate there.
Okay, I haven't personally gone down there, but...
Would have been nice if they... Ran the bike pass down behind the properties instead of along Kernebury Highway.
Now, they, they still have to go through tractor supplies parking lot to gain access to it.
Yeah, that's what it appears.
Yeah, because I do see a lot of traffic in that lot hidden from the back of the...
And I don't know if that's an agreement they have with them, or if it's just...
I don't know. I see signs all over the fences in tractor supply that say, "No Water Whiz parking, tractor supply only."
Well, they've leased the parking lot from there to Caddy's.
Yeah.
Or to the, whatever that street is. Is there a name for that street that goes behind it? Um, they've leased that. There's signs up for that, but how they...
How they transverse.
They do, they do go through tractor supplies parking lot.
I would, I would think, if I was the guy running tractor supply, I think I'd be up nights worrying about that.
Maybe, maybe they have an agreement.
But from a public safety perspective, we're okay with that? I mean, because if something happens in transit there, we have to get an ambulance down that way. Are, are we gonna be able to get access to it?
That was probably the biggest, um...
That's why...
The contention with the expansion of the parking lot was getting emergency vehicles in. It's been difficult in the past when they're at capacity.
Right.
And the parking design that we saw wasn't gonna improve it any.
So, do we have a responsibility as a planning board to say that, you know, this, was that a planned secondary entrance? I guess is my fundamental question. If it was, was it built to that... ...specification?
I don't, I think the leasing of the parking lot and, and that access was never brought to us.
I have no plan to show the detailed access way.
So what, so what happens when you lease a parking lot? Does, does that essentially become an extension of your business? And do you need a, a permit to operate that extension of your business now?
Under the...
I mean, when Vera, when Vera Life wanted to park there at Water Whiz, to use that as an extension of their business on Main Street, did we put them through a permit process to do that and create that shuttle exchange?
Not this board.
Not this board?
Not any board.
If it was the Board of Appeals, it probably was all set, so...
So, I guess this is just a twenty thousand...
It may have been negotiated through the host agreement or something like that, but we don't, we don't see that.
Yeah, this is just me at twenty thousand foot saying, "Community planning, you know, can you just take a parking lot and make an extension of your business? What does that do to the surrounding properties?" Otherwise, we're just farming out parking lots for any purpose around town.
It's the position of the, uh, of the town that that requires a special permit.
To use tractor supplies parking lot for Water Whiz's purposes?
That's right.
Or Walmart's parking lot, whoever owns that.
Use, use of, use of a offsite parking requires a special permit, that's what they're saying.
Right, which, to me, that sounds right, because if you were gonna have a county fair and you were gonna use farmland for parking and, you know, you'd have to get a special permit as an extension to the fair. Didn't, didn't we have Megpeace jump through hoops?
A commercial parking lot is, a commercial operation requires a special permit. Is that pretty much how it's interpreted? With that parking lot they leased already existed as a parking lot, and was the product of a site plan, a special permit, and the lease agreement.
But not for that, it's not for the use you're using now?
But for the use, yeah, packing cars, yes.
But not for cars that were gonna walk through the woods to come in the back door of Water Whiz?
I, I don't know how that arrangement came.
You see, I, I just think it needs some discussion, because having that overflow parking lot implies we, we've reached capacity... we, we've reached capacity on our existing parking lots, which then begs the question of, are we overcapacity in the water park as a whole? And, and now, now it's a public safety issue. Because if, if that park, if that water park is designed for seven thousand people, and we just gave another parking lot to push it to ten thousand people, we wouldn't accept that. We, we know the behavior's happening. It's not like it's not obvious or right in front of us. So, a- again, this is not to zero in on Water Whiz, but on the behavior of using a supplemental parking lot in a secondary exit. Is there a permit process and is there a public safety issue is the question I'm asking. And then, not to mention a, a community appearance issue.
And, and that's the, uh, the decision of the, of the Building Commissioner and the Board of Appeals, was that it requires a special permit for additional parking at that, for Water Whiz.
And as far as you know, they, they sought out that permit?
They, they've postponed action on the permit.
They?
The Board of Appeals.
So they went through the last year's summer without a permit and they're
They'll probably go through this year.
Without a permit?
Correct.
And what makes that foot traffic any less important than the Vera Life foot traffic? To not have, um, a patrolman for public safety if they're wandering through that parking lot? Yeah, I, I ran through town this weekend and there was a patrolman at the curb where folks were parking behind Main Street and walking over to Vera Life, and there was a patrolman stopping traffic and guiding them. So you've got people on foot in a traffic area, but yet you've got people on foot in a parking lot, and that tractor supply gets busy as all get out. So how come there's not a patrolman watching out for their safety?
That's a decision of the
Apparently, non-pot smokers can negotiate a parking lot on their own.
That's a decision of the
Those are the black baggers.
But, so you're saying, th- this board doesn't have any jurisdiction on this issue anyways?
You have site plan approval. I- if there's no other variance or a special permit necessary, the, uh, the planning board reviews all parking above ten spaces.
This would, in my mind, that would be the case. This is a variance for, for business use. They needed to expand a parking lot and it's over ten spaces. So it, it should've stopped here to ask the question of, how are you gonna segregate out from the rest of the plaza traffic? How are you gonna provide public safety? And, and, and why are we, we, why are we as a town, whether it's us or anyone else, allowing them to operate that way without any form of a permit?
Ken, did I hear you say that you felt the Z B A had the ownership of granting a permit for this?
That's right.
Can this planning board ask them for the status of that permit?
Sure.
So why don't you do that?
I'm not su- I'm not sure, but they may have conservation issues they had to address. Is that why the Z B A?
Yeah, but weren't they, weren't they
No.
Weren't they discussing the, the additional parking lot next, what was the Polynesian Food Restaurant? Isn't that
That's correct.
That, we're talking about
The other side.
The other side. So, in, unless somebody's come before us asking for guidance on the parking on the other side next to the old Walmart, which I, I've never seen anything.
Yeah, so to my point of nine hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents, my vote would be, don't release until we see whether we need to use that money for inspectional services of sorts.
I would have to agree.
That's, that's funding through Z B A, no, not through the planning board.
That, that particular one is still ongoing, so it may need additional inspections, so I wouldn't release it.
At least make a, I guess, just for a, a professional responsibility to suggest to the zoning board they need to revisit that before. Well, they would need to revisit it three months ago before we're in the middle of summer. They might, they might just respond, we, we took care of it. I just don't, I don't personally know.
Thinking from a, uh, my perspective as a, uh, as a town planner, I'm thinking that the best option may be to, uh, go to the building department and ask for enforcement of the regulations and see if there's
Which regulations specific?
Uh, for the, for the parking lot and the access.
Do they have a special permit?
As to whether or not, what special permits are needed, what, what, uh, what, what regulations apply to the, uh, the parking situation that they have, and the offsite parking and the access.
Does the Z B A want to have special services or permission?
Right.
And, and again, I just wanna, just the cornerstone of why I brought all this up was public safety, so it's not, I, I don't wanna prevent Water Whiz from being a success. It, it's just a matter of, do we build the access properly there? Can we get emergency vehicles in there? And, and without a permit enforcing that, I, I don't know that it should be allowed to happen.
Well, right now it does. They have used, the planning used a permit, a, uh, site that's not permitted, so I don't know what the liability there is.
Right. So what, so then, now that I opened the can of worms, what, what is the decision on that? Money there is to release it, is it?
No, I'd leave that, I'd leave that.
Planning board can't, can't recommend a release on that. It's not under your jurisdiction.
Oh, so why did it make our list?
This is for all projects, whether it's Z B A or planning board.
Trying to clean them up, because it takes a lot of staff resources to maintain these accounts. Plus, I think people would like their money if they're done.
I don't know, some people don't seem to care.
Yeah.
Why is it sitting there a long time?
Yeah, large sums of money been sitting there for a long time. Yeah, and I never walked it down there myself.
Cause the entrance is here. This is where you buy your tickets and you
Do you remember what that is?
Yeah, that's, uh, zoning board of appeals. That's a used car lot at the, uh, intersection of Main and, um,
For all we know, they're walking through the woods here.
And, uh, okay.
How does an emergency vehicle access? The guy across the street?
Yeah, with the picket fence.
Yeah, we gotta go check it out. I agree, a hundred percent.
Yeah, and while we're back, they'll get all their shopping carts out of there.
They're leaving.
Huh?
They're leaving.
Oh, before the road starts?
No, they're, they're closing down. Salvation Army, I think, I think they're, they're gone this week. Salvation Army?
They're moving out of there?
Yeah.
To where?
Uh, I wanna say they're either going to Tanton or Brockton, but they're leaving, wait, yeah.
Oh, you gotta be kidding me. Just look, I'll have my wardrobe right there. That's like saving grace for a
Shelves are already picked over, you've missed out.
Do you have a list of the ones you want me to inspect to give you a report?
You mean you weren't writing them down?
I've checked off five of them. I don't know if you want me to do them or not. I've got Carlton Place, Standard Repair, Canning Realty, Master Millwork, and Bayside.
Yeah. And Friends, uh, Best Friends Preschool.
Okay.
I thought we didn't know what J A S Realty was.
Yeah, did we figure out what J A S was?
I was pulling the file out on that one.
That's not Nazi, right? That's not Jordan.
No, his stuff is J N J, I think.
Zack Noun went to C B A also, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Need a motion to have Charlie do that, or is this acceptable?
No, I think he
I would appreciate a motion.
Oh, would you?
So I'll, can hold you to it.
So the check will clear?
Entertain a motion to have Charlie look into these, uh, five Derelict prop- I mean, fifty G accounts, and give a report back to the planning board before we release the money.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, discussion, fall town meeting. Think we need to address a cannabis question.
How many did I give you?
It was probably more than a heat.
More than we need.
We have one.
So I was coming down twenty-four yesterday, coming from a baptism up in New Hampshire.
Big billboard?
Big billboard right by Jordan Furniture says, vape on the cape.
Yep. I've seen a couple. There's one on one ninety-five, too. Your, your cannabis connection. Vera Life Wareham, big billboard. That's what we need.
Uh, because of town, there's a new process in town meeting this year, if you, this fall. Uh, the town moderator wants to try out electronic voting. So the, in, in doing that, uh, you have to set up the questions in the, in the, uh, the system prior to the vote. And what you want is enough time to have, to set up, ma- to get the recommendations and the, uh, the, um, the motions clear in the, uh, printed out and, and clearly in the, in the computer.
No, no more six o'clock meetings before town meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Well, you still can, but
But we won't be, we won't be in the other room rewriting the warrant.
So, uh, there are articles that are gonna be, uh, pushed forward, I'm assuming. And the planning board is gonna have to take them up and ha- hold public hearings on the articles that go through the go through the process. Um, I don't know if we can wait until the I, I, we can't wait until the Board of Selectmen has, has set the, uh, the warrant, because we'll have very little time at that point. So my thought is that we start thinking ahead of time about setting up hearings on zoning. So that you can go through the, the formal process prior to actually having to make recommendations on motions.
So my, so my concern over here in the, this corner, cause I don't know enough about this electronic voting, that I, I would, I, I'm not confident it can't be backdoored or corrupt. What, what prevents one person from putting in more than two vote, more than their own vote?
The system only allows one click per
U R L?
Health system. You get a quicker, essentially.
Oh, I see. This is not do it from home from your laptop. This is
No, 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 no.
Just a data recording.
At the, at town meeting.
I see. Okay.
So you'll have to
Bang the rocks together once for, yes, and twice for
You'll have to attend the, uh, the town meeting to vote. But once you're there, you'll, you'll get, you'll be able to do it electronically.
Mm-hmm. So it's just, just to remove any possible intimidation on how you wanna vote?
And the, uh, the, uh, mistakes are potentially made by the counters.
And the time it takes to count and
What's the reaction time?
Depends if you play in jeopardy or not.
You probably can see it real time on the screen.
It is quick.
I think it'd be worth a try, because I, I know, uh, when, when you talk about voter intimidation, I, I remember way back when I used to attend town meeting, people would tell you, they would tell you after, I seen the way you voted on such and such or whatever, and, uh, I think some people, it'll feel at ease that they don't know, you know, their neighbor's not thinking that he's backstabbing them or something like that. He's just voting the way he should be voting from his
Where you're voting against your employer. Sitting in the seat right next to you, and then you're wondering if you have a job tomorrow.
Now, on the page, you see a few articles that
These are, these are ones that have been kicked around. I, I've heard them from a few different people and, uh, uh, the only one that I was recommending was the, um, article, third, uh, change, amending Article thirteen forty, the determination of non-conforming structure by the building commi- building official. And I'd like to allow others to make that determination, so that it doesn't, well, we've had the problem with the transition with the, uh, the latest building commissioner being out.
Say, he made a bunch of changes in what was conforming and non-conforming, so now we need somebody to interpret them?
No, what we, what we need is, is to allow somebody else other than him, since he's not available at all times.
What's the new guy do?
New guy hasn't come on board yet.
Yeah, went to Dartmouth. Month ago, month or more.
So this is only a temporary, uh
No, this would be permanent.
Permanent?
Uh, the, the, the whole idea of, of, uh, having the control through the, only through the building commissioner was actually something that the town of Brooklyn had, uh, had created in their zoning bylaws. And, uh, in a bigger, in a bigger town, in a bigger, uh, really a city, that, that is acting like a town, uh, they, uh, they needed that, that control, but it hasn't, hasn't been perfect. And as we had problems in the last month, uh, part of it is because we've had to wait for the, the building commissioner to, uh, get some time off or come around at six in the morning and, uh, hit the office and do the sign-offs on these, on these projects. If we were to allow a legal counsel or a, uh, an engineer or a planner to interpret the, uh, the law and make the application for non-conforming, you still have the Board of Appeals. All it, all it is, is really allowing that somebody else to say that you can submit a special permit application or a variance request to the Board of Appeals. And you don't necessarily have to go through the board, the, the building commissioner.
Is, is, in your mind, is it strictly a bandwidth issue on the building commissioner?
Yes.
Do we need to be careful about opening up to any lawyer, any planner, or any engineer?
No, uh, because we have, we still have the, uh, the staff and the Board of Appeals.
That's a problem right there in itself.
Would this determination be made by one of the above working for the, on the town's behalf?
Sounds on the be on, but on the applicant's behalf, I think.
It could be either way.
How would you, how would you
That's, that's, you know
interpret that?
How do you mean?
If, if an applicant's lawyer came in and said
It's non-conforming.
I can build on the property line, cause there was one here in eighteen seventy-five.
No, this, this is just for those who wanted to, uh, who know they need a, a permit from, a, a variance or a special permit.
I think it's just the opposite, isn't it? Cause the, the guy's coming in saying, I know we don't conform, here's why.
But it's gonna be okay. I wanna build a nice place, trust me, fit into the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, I wanna have a three hundred foot breezeway between my, whatever.
But this is just kicking off the process, right?
That's right. It's, it's not to make the determination without having the Board of Appeals. It's all it is to say and allowing somebody to say, I need to go to the Board of Appeals, and I don't necessarily need to have to wait three, four weeks for the building commissioner to, uh, tell me I need to go to the Board of Appeals. I know I need to go to the Board.
It was like that when he was here.
The, the idea sounds good, but why couldn't the lawyers, planners, engineers, or surveyors be people in, employee of the town? Why why open it up to outside influence?
So this would allow somebody to come in and not have to wait for denial?
Correct.
But they can bring their own engineer or own surveyor in or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Certified we don't
They still, they still go through the review. They still have to get a building permit eventually, so if they're wrong, they're not gonna get a building permit.
My, my only concern is if this was twelve months ago, we're, we're talking about trying to thin out the, the amount of activity that was coming in front of the zoning board.
Hmm.
And, and the planner signing off on this, in my mind, is a gatekeeper saying, you, you go ahead, I'm granting you the, to, the, the use of the planning board to make a judgment on this, or we're not ready to go in front of it for this reason and others. I don't know that a lawyer or a, a civilian attorney outside of the town, um, it's gonna act the same way as that gatekeeper. I, I just see the agenda for the zoning board becoming this long, instead of being this controlled level that, that we currently have, cause we have that, we have the, this gatekeeper choke point of, of the planner saying, okay, here's how you control the agenda of
So in the absence of a building commissioner, they would an engineer would come in or an applicant would come in, file for building permit? an applicant would come in, file for building permit? Would they then send it up to your office to check for compliance, or where would it go?
What they would do is, the idea is that you could, you could skip, you don't, you don't have to go through the building permit process first, you can go through the Board of Appeals process first.
That's a bad time to even come up, that's a bad recommendation.
Isn't, isn't the way that you do that, though, is you apply for a building permit, and you get a denial, and the denial then gets you the authorization through his office to go to the ZBA? You can't apply directly to the ZBA, the way I understand it.
That's, that's right, and that's, that's my point. Is you can't do it directly.
We admit we will be denied. Let's start that.
That's right.
Yeah, but how, how do you control the volume coming in front of ZBA, though?
You don't control the volume. If people want to build, they want to build.
Well, how do you, but there's only, there's only so much that can be done every other Tuesday of the month.
I, I have, I, I've seen this come up, where somebody needed to do something that they know didn't conform, in one manner or another. And they can't go anywhere, because they've been sitting there for weeks waiting for a signature.
But, but, that's a valid point, I agree with you. But why open it up to people outside of town, employed? Why, why not control it within the town? So, if the building commissioner's not available, here's a list of three authorized or four authorized people that you can use as a fallback. Ken, Charlie...
Zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
But to that, to that end, why couldn't a plan or a lawyer or an engineer on behalf of the applicant come to the admin in the building department and say, "We failed, please sign off so I can start the process"?
Or, or an assistant, or the assistant building inspector, or any of the inspectors at all?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you have a...
I, I agree with you.
If you, if you have a, somebody that is of the town employee is the fallback to the commissioner. Having, having somebody outside of the town saying, "Yep, here's my application, I know it's no good, push us on through to the zoning board," that, to me, that doesn't make any sense. I would want some kind of a stopgap.
There needs to be some consistency, and I don't know how you do that without basically a checklist. You might be able to do it possibly, if there was a checklist that said, "You must be able to say yes to these five questions in order for it to be a nonconforming use," whatever the zoning bylaw says. But it, in order to be consistent, you could, you could have 15 or 20 different ideas as to what a nonconforming use was, by just laying it wide open to anybody. I agree, Mike, I think there needs to be something in-house. Maybe it'll take a little training for people to understand what they are. But I don't even feel qualified to make that kind of a determination without some research into exactly what the history of the project is. How long's it been there? What was it used for? What do you propose uses? But there's got to be some basis for it that could be legitimate. Just a question, Ken, how does this, how does this stand up in terms of what Chapter 48 says about making application to the zoning board?
There's, there isn't a requirement that a building official make a determination before you go to the Board of Appeals, under 48.
But, but isn't the zoning enforcement officer the one who makes the determination in behalf of the applicant that either, yes, a special permit is required, or a variance is required, or some kind of that nature? It doesn't have to be an official of the town to make that determination?
To take that one step further, doesn't the special permit authorizing authority, whoever it may be, depend upon that denial letter from the building commissioner to highlight the areas that need to be addressed?
Is he the only person that can issue a denial?
At this time, yes.
And that's what you're seeking to rectify?
You know, I would like to have a single point of contact in the town, so that when a developer comes in, they go to one, one spot, get their, their go-ahead.
Been hearing that for 30 years.
I know, I know. I'd love to have that, but to try to make it happen with the, with the variation in staffing that we've gone through, makes it difficult.
Well, why, why, this was a question from the last town, why are we sponsoring this? This, this board's not even in that flow process. I think you're sponsoring it, aren't you?
Well...
Are you just, just asking for input here, or are you asking us to sponsor this at the town meeting?
No, it can be from the planning, the planning director, if you want to do it that way, I don't, I don't care, particularly care. One of the things I wanted to bring forward was to see whether or not there was a consensus on the planning board, as to whether or not this is something that you should be considering.
I, I would be uncomfortable with it.
Say again, Mike?
I would be uncomfortable with it. I, I think we'd be better served putting our efforts into correcting the availability issue of the building commissioner. This is just, this is a Band-Aid for a different problem.
Would it be fair to say, though, that, that we do want to stop any situations where people are waiting for a signature for weeks on end in order to get their process started? I mean, that's a valid goal, I think that...
But I, I guess as a, as an employer, if I had an employee who, who was unable to perform their duties, i.e. waiting weeks on end, that would be the question to be asking, is why is this happening, and how come we're not fixing it?
I, I, I agree with your comments 100%. All I'm saying is, is that the problem is a real one that needs to be addressed somehow.
Put out an RFP for, for an engineer on a consulting basis to sit in and play this role for the town. If, if it's a labor issue, where we can't keep somebody in that seat, convert that direct hire to a...
I mean, it doesn't have to be an engineer, it need, you need somebody familiar with the zoning bylaws and, and the, and 48. You know, when that, when that position was created, it was supposed to pull everything together, kind of one-stop shopping for permits. And as time goes on, it's just gotten more complicated.
Well, I mean, can you digitalize this process in saying, you know, again, why wouldn't you go onto the town's website, fill out an application that could be determined by a panel whether you can advance forward? You know, there's, there's four approval individuals that can sign off on an electronic application, and if they sign off on that, then you can move forward to the zoning board. Let them argue the case digitally on why they think it's nonconforming. I think you got this bottleneck of, "I have to have a, a person right in front of me." I just don't think we're using technology enough in, in this process. We've still got this labor-intensive manual process.
Have you seen this work, other cities?
Yeah, not all, all town, not all towns require that the only one building official be the one to make the determination.
Did they implement it in a similar way to this thought? Or did they use, have backup people, you know, people like the planning director, for example?
I don't know, I can do some more research on it and see if there's any, any other process that makes sense.
I think that's, that's probably the major thing, is if that person's not available, it should be a town representative that makes the call.
Yeah, a backup person.
That, that'd be, that'd be fine.
Isn't there someone in the building inspections department that could do that?
There's a zoning enforcement officer, but he's not given the authority to do that.
He's not doing what?
He's not given the authority to make these determinations.
Well, that's where maybe the authority should go.
Yeah. I mean, that seems to, to be a legitimate fix to the problem.
And then internally, if he is not versed, you know, he can hit the planning department, the ZBA, he can, you know...
Town engineer.
You can discuss it and find out within days is, what you're going to do instead of weeks.
Right.
Yeah, it seems to me that would be a lot more controllable. I think this way here, opening it up to outside lawyers and planners and engineers, I think you're the wild, wild west.
Yeah, because when somebody does make a call like that, who do we turn to for decision? The commissioner?
Can we talk about some of the other ones, Ken?
I'd love to.
The bottom one, about density in WV1 at 1,000 feet, square feet?
Right now, the allowance for existing, existing buildings is that you can have 1,000 square feet per unit. What this, was this recommendation from the zoning Board of Appeals was that the density be 1,000 square feet per unit for new construction as well.
The other thing in the, in the village districts, we always talked about mixed use, but somehow or other, it got removed in the bylaw.
1,000's too big.
Which, mixed use in the district seems like a perfect fit.
That's a perfect fit. Retail on street level and apartments on second level.
We've talked, we've talked, yeah, 10 years and...
That's how you're going to revitalize Main Street, is by having foot traffic.
That was spoken for make these places, and all of a sudden, now it's all residential.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
I missed that.
One thing we always talked about in the villages was mixed use, and somehow it got eliminated from the use chat.
Ah, mixed use, yeah.
Who do you think will sponsor a mixed use article?
I will, if nobody else does.
No, I think the planning board should, I think the planning board should go forward with that.
Have we talked about the EDS at this presentation here?
No, we haven't.
That's, mixed use comes out loud and clear in there.
Let me, let me just go back. The land, the first one, landscape buffer between commercial and industrial. There was also a big gap between commercial, residential, and residential. Like, if you wanted to put a body shop, you, I think it was a 20-foot setback. If you want an office, it's a 40-foot setback.
Yeah, the table is a little screwed up.
It doesn't make any sense.
Table's a little screwed up, under 1042.
So, I think we could, we could correct that.
Maybe rewrite the table and, and make some recommendations as to...
Marijuana, marijuana facilities, make less stringent?
Yeah, there is a, the zoning Board of Appeals member who had recommended a opening up allowances in the, in the bylaw.
In what way? In what fashion?
Not restricting the, the number of adult-use facilities, not restricting the, the commercial strip zoning designation.
It may, it might be a selfish opinion on my part, but I am, I am not for that at all. We, we are, we're already developing a reputation as the pot capital of the South Shore, why do we want to expand on that?
Well, yeah, I don't think we need to...
I'm sorry, Ken, what kind of licenses does he want to make less stringent or restrictive?
Adult use and medical.
I would, I would leave those alone. I would agree with the second one, prohibit social consumption, or cafes, however you want to put it.
Social consumption is the state regulation definition of what, what you might think of as a cafe.
Now, on the allow medical where adult use is allowed, I, but, we're going to stick with the number of medicinal licenses? Do we, do we cap the number of medicinal?
We capped it essentially by saying that it had to be within the institutional zoning district. If we, if we say that medical is allowed elsewhere, then we have the potential of VerLife moving somewhere else.
I just don't want it so...
So, in other words, we're changing...
You get six more medical licenses, and they're given recreational. So, if we can cap the license... Now, see, there's an example, I don't know why they couldn't walk into the ZBA and say, "If I can do recreational in the medicinal district, why can't I do medicinal in the recreational district?"
Because we say no use variances are allowed in the, in the marijuana facilities.
Then tell them to get the recreational out of there.
What do you need medicinal?
Violating the zoning bylaw.
Why, why do you need medical marijuana anymore? Just have the doctor write you a prescription and go over the counter and buy recreational?
It's cheaper.
Why, why are we... I'll be honest with you, guys, I don't want to spend any more time on this marijuana. Give it to somebody else. This board doesn't need, not need to talk about marijuana. It's just, we wasted so much energy on this thing, and we've got so many other issues, I, I don't want to talk about it anymore. I'll listen. I, I want, I want the, you know what I really want, Ken?
What's that?
Whichever selectman is bringing this to the table, have them come in front of us in person. I'm, I'm sick of them hiding behind a piece of paper here. Come in here and tell us what the benefit to this town is going to be, because if it's 3% tax base, then I want to see the number of what this even generated. Let VerLife drive out of town, because I don't think this thing's making us money, it's making us headaches.
Well, I think maybe instead of having the selectman come and talk to you about that, how about the redevelopment authority come and tell you about the economic development strategy? And, because that goes right to some things like, that you're going to find important, such as the redevelopment of downtown, and this idea of putting mixed use.
That's fine, there has to be more of that interaction. This, we, we sit here and speculate off of two sentences on a piece of paper right now, on what we think somebody wants this outcome to be. Let us tell, tell us firsthand what you're trying to accomplish here, instead of relaying it through paper and, and second and third messaging.
Does the rest of the board feel that you want a presentation on the economic development strategy?
Yeah, I think if someone, if someone feels strong enough that they think that this is a good idea, let's talk about it face to face.
Well, no, we're talking two different things.
Two different things at this point.
The marijuana facilities, you know, ZBA made some recommendations, and I think we've all, I mean, I, I am concerned about this social consumption garbage.
Yeah.
The, and realistically, VerLife doesn't fit in the location they're in.
No, I agree.
You know, and if we can find a way to move that to a less congested area and, without opening the door to more licenses, I, I think it's...
So, in other words, they, they come in here knowing that upfront, that it might not have worked for them because of the situation, so now we're going to, we're going to change our rules to accommodate them? That's what you're saying?
Well, no, the Cannabis Control Commission came in after the fact and said, "By the way, you can have a recreational license if you want it." You know, I think...
What happened was, the town decided first that they wanted to say it was only in the institutional district, maybe thinking medical was associated with the, the hospital somehow. I don't know, but what, the zoning said that that was the place they had to go. They picked that for medical when the state says a recreational use is allowed. They also said that if you have a medical license...
Right, you go first preference.
You automatically get option for recreational use.
Yeah.
So, all of a sudden, it changed, and the whole intent of what was there.
We did the medicinal zoning two years before the...
Yeah, we, we made them go there.
Yeah.
Right. But is the state making that much money on it, that they're going to go and they're going to Shanghai all these towns and let them do what they want? Because they're the ones that said that if you got, if you got medical, you can have recreational too. The state said that, right?
Right.
So, next thing they're going to sell us, we're going to have these, what they call them? Social lounge, lounge? So, I'm going to call my Uber driver, says, "Hey, man, I want to get stoned, pick me up, take me down to whatever." I get buzzed out, and my Uber driver takes me back home. So, that's going to happen when we am next, right?
It's going to happen somewhere in the state.
Yeah.
But it's not going to happen here, because you don't know how that is yet.
Well, I just, I, I think that this whole, this whole marijuana subject runs right down the same path as casinos. I think you're selling yourself to the devil for a few bucks.
Yeah.
That's, that's the long, the long of it.
Can VerLife move into the Rosebrook Medical Building?
No, they cannot.
Why? Is that zoning?
It's a zoning.
What is that zoned as? Is that medical use?
It's not institutional.
Who's that, R3?
It's BDOT, I don't know what the end of line...
It's R60, I think.
Could be R60, I don't know. Might be, there might be some commercial strip in there, too.
Yeah, there is along the highway.
Something like that.
Oh, where is it? Because it's sent a line in a morgue, moved. Cause the center line of the mud moved. Is that, was that strip commercial from the center line or is it...
Always from the sideline.
Even when the sideline moved?
No. No, it was defined by a certain sideline at the time that it was adopted. And the fact that they changed the location of the layout, in my opinion, didn't change the location of the zoning district one single bit. Because it was well-defined by the layout of a certain date and a certain time. If you want to change it, there's a way of doing it by referring to the current layout and giving it a date. But in my view, like what happened in front of, uh, where Wyam Market Place is today, where they relocated Route 28, that 500-foot commercial strip is still according to the old layout, in my view.
Hmm.
You just don't, you just don't go willy-nilly changing zoning lines because somebody changes the layout. I mean, that's, that's what Serpert tried to suggest when they made the map up and I, I don't believe that.
Can we cut, can we go back to the mixed use discussion?
Sure.
There you go. Um, we just had a workshop, the redevelopment authority did, where we presented the, the results of an economic development strategy that we had, um, that we had hired out to get done. And mixed use is used in that strategy in the recommendation sections that, many, many times. I presented most of that at two workshop sessions and I would like to present it to this board.
Well, if you, you know, jump back in the Wayback Machine, when we did the zoning rewrite, that was, the top subject was mixed use in the villages. And somehow it didn't get translated into the zoning bylaw, so it's, comes up as not allowed.
Yeah, I understand. And, uh, I mean, when you read the full report, and I'll have copies of the full report for everybody when I do this, and you see the summaries that I present, it clearly calls out, we need zoning changes to adapt to current times and current markets. So I would like to share that. It'd take about 15, 20 minutes at the most to do. It's a, it's a presentation, um, it's a summary of an 85-page report that FXM Associates did for the town. It's, and it's, I, I find it fascinating. I've read the full report five, six times now, so...
I have nothing better to read than...
Yeah. My wife said, "Get up from the computer." So, George, I, I would like to be on the agenda sometime in the near future at your convenience, please.
As long as it's not quarter of 11.
No, if it gets that late, we'll postpone it till another time.
But, I mean, as far as these recommendations go, I mean, I don't think there's any vast conspiracies here. I think it's just identifying the growing pains of the world after marijuana.
So in, in terms of process, um, I've laid out a, a few ideas about, that have, that have come my way. If there are other recommendations that you wanted to promote, or do you want to wait and listen to the economic development strategy first and then start thinking about what rezoning?
I think that's such a, again, to me, that, that's, that's exactly what this board needs to hear is, is what is the grand plan that we're working for? Because we continue to sit here and we approve everything as a one-off, as a one-off, as a one-off. And is it consistent with other discussions that are going on, that are feeding into the economic development committee, planning committee?
Well, on a couple of occasions in the past, the redevelopment authority has come in at the 11th hour with unfinished town meeting warrants. This is an effort to try to smooth things out a little better, so...
Yeah. I'm glad you, I'm glad you said that, George. Thank you.
But I, but, but again, I think it's one of those opportunities to co-present to us in the ZBA and maybe a third committee that, that might apply. I don't think we opened it up to a, a public hearing yet. I mean, the public hearing can watch the interaction remotely, but there's never any dialogue between us and the ZBA. It, it's what are our recommenda- I, I don't know what the discussion is based on our recommendations at the ZBA. Are those, those guys are a bunch of nutbags, don't listen to what they have to say, or they brought some valuable information to us and it changed our opinion about things? We don't hear that, that response conversation.
If I may...
Yeah.
To your point...
Yeah.
I'm doing the finance committee Wednesday night and I'm, uh, we have an ask going to the ZBA to do the same thing. And it's exactly what you're talking about. And that's let's get, uh, some common goals, some common direction. Let's find out what we agree on, let's find out what we don't agree on in a deal, and deal with that. So we can have common goals we're all working toward. And, and in my mind, and this is just me speaking, it leads right up to the master plan.
Right.
That if we can all get on board and have it where we want, then we should feel comfortable.
Yeah, I think there's a few things that in, in, in the two years that I've been coming here is, this almost plays, if you don't like daddy's answer, go ask mommy.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and when mommy says no, go back and ask daddy again. And you're gonna keep ping-ponging this thing around and, and what, what should, in my mind, what should happen is, i- if we're in sync with each other and we come to a conclusion and a decision, when they went up in front of the ZBA, they would support that decision because we uniformly agree that that's, is, is a, a, basically a foundational anchor on where the town's going. But the town's traveling down four different roads right now. You know, finance is traveling down a road, we're traveling down a road, zoning's traveling down a road. Maybe these things converge and maybe they don't.
Let's find out.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're asking, you know, how did that, how did that one get approved? Well, ZBA approved it. But when it came in front of us, we said, "This, this doesn't look like a good plan or a good solution." But somehow it got bypassed and, and then, if you don't like the ZBA's answer, then what do you do? Go to selectmen. Maybe it'll be consistent or maybe it'll be the whole third answer and, and you'll eventually get it.
No, I think if you deny it to ZBA, just like here, you end up in court.
I think there's been a couple cases that I remember here where they've gone to the, the zoning board and it's gotten passed through. There's some exceptions been made. I mean, aren't, I mean, based on the town's bylaws, are they the ultimate and final decision-maker on all matters? We're just agents of the ZBA, this board, aren't we?
No, you're not.
I mean, not the ZBA, of the, of the selectmen.
Selectmen.
No.
No.
You're an autonomous board.
Totally autonomous.
Selectmen would like us to be.
If you listen to them, they're with the scourge of the earth.
Some of them.
Working on it.
Do we have anything, um, that we didn't address? Not that I want our warrant to be any bigger, but...
Yeah, is there anything, if there's anything else that anybody can think of in the meantime on zoning?
When do the articles have to begin, Ken?
I, I don't know yet. There wasn't a schedule. You saw it, Jim, was there?
I thought it was, I thought there could be no changes, like 10 days. And sometime in August, uh, the warrant will be open.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He was saying that sometime in August.
Hold on, hold on. Did Mrs. Smith, moderator Smith, send you any timelines?
I, I got an email, but I didn't see a timeline.
From what I gather, the fall town meeting, the timeframe didn't change. We just moved the election in the spring after, because the election was actually the opening of town meeting, which pushed the closure of the warrant even further back. It doesn't have the same effect in the fall.
What I'm asking, George, was that you don't have any articles to review right now? You've got nothing?
Yeah.
Just some suggestions, that's all. So you gotta have some specifics and then ultimately get to a public hearing process before the town meeting so you can make a report, but this doesn't give you much to go on yet.
And, and I think that's what Mr. Buckland was saying, to, to move forward with whatever you want more quickly than not so that you can have the public hearings and, and not be trying to race to the finish line in September, late September, October. And, um, I think that was your statement when you started earlier.
That's right. So if there's something that, that makes sense for, that the planning board wants to take forward and champion, then start thinking about it now.
Do you want to get more specific on some of these, or...
Only if the planning board thinks that it's worth the time.
What's your thoughts?
The, for, for me, I think the only one that I'd be interested in maybe trying to push forward would be the last one.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's an easy fix.
Yeah, and it makes sense.
All right, so you're, you're talking about the WV1?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so let's, let's spend a little more time on that. Get, get the presentation on the economic development strategy, which deals with the, some of the downtown issues and gives some basis for, the market basis for development. And we can then talk about how we, how we'd restructure WV1 or, or tweak, tweak it.
We didn't want to address that first one?
Well, I think we could apply that to WV, Onset Village 1 and 2.
You want to do OV1 and 2 as well? WV1, WV2 and OV1, OV2.
If it's not consistent in the bylaw, then it should... And I think we need to make a shot at the marijuana, uh, issues because you don't want to be trying to walk the barn after the horse cut out. We can make a pass at it if we, if we're done in time, fine.
I think, is the question, George, whether the planning board should, should sponsor it or should Ken sponsor it out of his office? I think the planning board should.
Well, it, it's a zoning issue. We have to represent it.
We don't have to. Anybody can represent it, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, the planning board seems to feel pretty strongly about it. I suggest that the planning board, um, sponsor it.
Everybody good with that?
I'm all right. You know my feelings on it.
Since we're going from the bottom to the top, how about the, uh, non-conforming structures, I think? Um, I think we're just seeking, I think... Another person in the house to be able to take over in place of the...
Yeah, I think this is something where I, I sit down and talk with the building commissioner and the town administrator and we make some, come up with some ideas on...
Is he coming on board?
If it requires legislative act to give him, give somebody else the authority to act on his behalf.
Right. And, and part of that depends on what the term building official means.
Is that part of, uh, mass general law that he's the only authority, or...
The zoning enforcement officer can be an authority as well.
Could you say the building commissioner or his designee?
Yes.
So we'll figure that out, whether you need town meeting action to do...
Right, right.
Solve the problem.
We can, we can deal with it on a staffing level and if...
But what, but what I heard is, what I heard this board supports a solution to the problem that you outlined, right?
Yes, thank you.
We just don't know what the solution is yet.
Right.
And actually, I think the first issue, the setbacks, I think that's, should be pretty easy to fix too. Well, that's a landscape buffer, but I think it should address setbacks also.
You want to do setbacks as well? That referenced Article 1042 is the landscape buffer table. We can look at setbacks as well if you want to consider that. See about consistency of setbacks.
Say, I don't know why...
So we adopted all of them. Basically is what we just said.
Where would that... I'm trying to think where that would be an issue between commercial and industrial. We've got...
I think it's the old style industrial with a lot of noise, vibrations, sound. And commercial, which could be a nice restaurant. And so you have, what kind of buffer do you want in between the two?
So if I want to know between industrial and commercial, I go industrial, commercial, and it's a 40-foot?
Or you do industrial and commercial and you get...
20 feet.
Right.
I did read it right.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
The table is, is wrong.
And this is the ZBA? They're probably gonna go 10 feet across the board?
I think you can make recommendations.
Oh, it's five feet back and five foot tall too.
Oh, yeah.
Charlie, I was looking at the letter you got regarding Bay Point's pumping station.
Yep.
And it says, "The suggestion is to go with the pump manufacturer's maximum cycle recommendation." That seems backwards to me.
No, because the more cycles per hour you have, the harder it's from, the harder it's going.
That's my point. I would think you, you wouldn't want to design against the maximum number of cycles a pump can do. It sounded like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that their design was a...
Well, I, I didn't mean to say that you're gonna go up to the maximum.
Okay.
The, the pump manufacturer...
Would do not exceed the maximum?
Says, "Don't exceed like 20 cycles per hour," something like that. The calculation is something around 10 or 11. So it's well below that maximum well.
Well, with any piece of equipment of that sort, you want long runtimes and not as many...
There won't be one.
But that pump, that well is so shallow, it seems like a lot of wasted capacity.
There isn't very much capacity at all because it's only between the on and off of the pump is only a foot.
But it had quite a bit under that, was useless.
It is. Once, once that, the bottom six inches of the well has nothing. Then there is another six-inch level at which the pump shut off. Then there's a 12-inch cycle where the pump comes on. Then there's another six-inch level where the second pump comes on if the first one can't handle it. And then the next one is the alarm to tell you that it's over capacity.
I thought, looking at the design, I thought it was like three feet below the pump off setting. It was like wasted space.
No.
Okay, I misread it.
No, it's, the pumps, the pumps virtually sit on the bottom of the pump well. And the bottom six inches, uh, is always so that the pump is submerged. And the shut off is six inches above that. And then you've got the foot of operating space. But it's like 350 to 375 gallons within that one foot of space. And if the pump operates the way that they say it is, at its capacity of 140 gallons a minute, it's roughly on for three minutes to empty the well. I'm not so sure that's gonna happen because part of my concern was that we don't know how that line between where the pump's gonna be in Onset Avenue, whether that's clean or what the story is. Part of the special permit was that they put in cleanouts every 300 feet so that you could get in there and inspect it and clean out sections of it at a time. So that's something that, uh...
Did we miss the vote on that, Charlie?
Before that hearing, you need to talk about.
Did we miss the vote on that? Because Onset Avenue just got repaved, right?
No, you didn't. Doesn't matter whether the town repaved it or not, they've still gotta do it and they'll have to repave that section from curb to curb.
It's not gonna be a half-assed pass job.
If they have to heat treat the, heat treat the joint so that it's nice uniform... If they have to heat treat the, heat treat the joint so that it's nice and uniform, they'll have to do that. Dave Menard will tell them what they want, what they have to do. It's unfortunate that it didn't get done before the repaving was done, but you live with what you got. And now they're going to have to pay to do that extra work.
Here's one other thing I've included in your packets and we'll talk about it when Emanuel gets back from the next meeting, which is a checklist on the architectural design standards. And the, it's been a question as to following the standards and so I thought at least, at least what we could do is just pull the standards out of the bylaw and use it as a checklist for development applications. And when Emanuel gets back, we'll, I'll have a discussion with him if he sees value in that and if it addresses some of the issues that he has.
So Judge, next time around, if we get anything we want to add to the fall town meeting, we'll bring it up.
Uh, yeah, I think if you wait much longer than that, we won't get it done.
Okay.
Anything further?
Yeah. Entertaining the motion to close so we can go into executive session?
Do we have that on the agenda?
Sure is. It seems like we've been skipping over that.
Yeah.
Oh, I read the, I was looking for documents on the appeal. Motion's been made to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation, namely the...
Appeal of Old Stage Coach Road.
The appeal of the decision of denial on A and R on Old Stage Coach Road. Make the declaration that items discussed in executive session if held in open session could have a detrimental effect on the position of the court. Roll call, was there a second?
Second.
Mark?
Mark Bianco.
It's a roll vote, Richard.
Do I get to, do I have to leave?
You were not present here, so I suppose you could leave if you want.
Can I stay?
You're a member of the board.
You can stay.
I can't. But, but what was your question to me?
I'm just looking for a roll call vote to go into executive session. Mike?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you.
Give a chance for Bob to...
Bob needs a few minutes to wrap his stuff so he can get the hell out of here.
Okay.
Heck out of here, I'm sorry, Bob.
Charlie, do you, oh, we're not going to return to open session? Got that. All right, we're all done. We don't need to return to open session.